There you are, sir. Head of the table. So what happens when you're the bad boy? Bad boy. Head of the table.
Sing it.
Bad boy. I'm sorry. We're on.
No, I changed. Just Lisa yesterday made a Matthew Mahogany comment. Matthew McConaughey comment.
Yeah.
And Matthew Mahogany. I was like.
Take them together.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If anybody's interested, yes, I know they have to sign for process.
Wow, it's gross.
So here's where I'm at in the bathrooms around here. I know there's. What if I take what's off?
Well, we won't be camping this. Just hurry up and use it and get out.
Which is.
There's enough hours.
The perception is.
I stole a lot of people's bathroom.
Now people will.
Well, they won't use it because it's a stench.
That's probably true.
It's all good. Okay.
But I totally understand.
Yeah, I don't want to replay some of that stuff because we're gonna move out.
No.
Well, I don't want to pick them up.
I.
If I'm gonna agree with what you're talking about.
I don't need a urinal anyway, so.
You don't need a urinal. That's plus.
Some people may put them in the drop box that we already have. I don't really want to put a drop box too much just because I don't want people to think they can put their ballots in there.
I have them.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Good. Very good.
It's not a problem.
I heard a lot of people ask if they can drop stuff for me and I'm like, nope.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Yes. All right, very good. Thank you. Thanks, Lisa.
I'm gonna shut this so it doesn't echo.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, I've got nine o'clock on April twenty ninth. We'll call this special meeting of the board of supervisors to order. Jake, roll call.
Keisha, did you start it?
Yep.
Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Okay, our rolling agenda has been discussion of COVID- nineteen impacts on county operations. That will be a very appropriate agenda item for today. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion, we approve today's agenda.
Chairman, I think we need to unmute our.
Yep, see it. Our new tech supervisor, Keisha Johnner.
Thank you. I can't help thinking.
Can you guys hear us over there? Wave. Somebody wave. All right. All right, Jake, we have a motion or do we have a motion yet?
We have a motion, just another second.
Is there a second?
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Okay, on to why we're all gathered here today, and that is to begin to have a discussion on a how we want to proceed with the reopening of county operations now that we have the governor starting to relax certain restrictions. So I'm gonna start off with a little opening comment here, and then I want this to be fairly free flowing, realizing we've got different issues between conservation, folks that aren't stationed at East Elementary, and then East Elementary. So get some different dynamics to talk about. First and foremost, though, any reopening has to balance our service to the customer, but our safety to our employees and the population. But even though there is a reopening from the governor, this isn't over. And I think we have to, as county officials, I think we need to be very cognizant of that. My fear, and I'll express it openly, is that there will be a lot of people thinking that now that everything is being relaxed, we're all back to what we were before the virus even began. And why aren't you just, I was just talking with Steve Edwards and the calls that he's getting, the calls I got last night, it's both extremes. I should be able to now function the way I did before. Or it's how come you haven't built the Maginot Line on North Marion County to keep everybody from Polk and Jasper out? So we're seeing both of those extremes. So I think we have to have a very balanced approach. We have to have a solid rationale for why we do what we do. Understanding that some of our offices, courts, conservation, sheriff, county attorney, there are other interested parties and other directives that can come from state offices. Michaela with her DOT, Tyler, of course, with DOT connections and other state connections. Every one of us has a little bit of that in what we do. So my concern is that we will get a bloom in the fall. And that Marion County has been, our citizens have been excellent, our businesses have been excellent, our nonprofits, churches have been excellent in listening to us for the last forty-five days to institute the President's guidelines to slow the spread. And they've done a fantastic job. And I know people are antsy, we're antsy, to get back to some level of normalcy. But don't let that cloud good judgment. We still have to exercise safeties where safeties are necessary. So there's my opening comment as we talk about reopening. We have had discussions already with Michaela about a soft opening for driver's licenses. And Keisha, who else did we talk to? Oh, Jake.
Oh, Jake, we talked to Karen also.
Absentee voting on May fourth, and we're working on processes around those. And we've had a conversation with Karen's office and a recorder. So there's my opening. Steve, Keisha, do you have any initial thoughts you would like to just share as we get started?
No, the only question I would have, and I wanted to hear what the department has have to say about what they think that means to them and what it would mean for us to accomplish that goal. I mean, that's what I'm interested in.
Good.
Yep.
Very good. All right, well, let's, this is open-ended, free-flowing. Let's figure this out, how best we do this. I know we've already started with Jake's office, and I don't know about anybody else, Chris, in terms of Plexiglas. Who right now has Plexiglas? So let's just get down to some nitty-gritty here in East, and let's talk East Elementary, yeah. Oh, you've got some.
Yeah, Jake and I both purchased from the same vendor.
So Chris put some across our window. Looks really nice, actually, for the people to come and get the absentee ballots that we have to start doing May fourth. So we just, we did it all the way across the window and left, I don't know, ten inches or something like that, I'm not sure, there. And then we also did purchase some plastic barriers that we're not necessarily going to use in the courthouse, but we're going to use at polling sites. And I think Michaela's gonna use them now at some of her stuff. And we have some other ones if anybody wants to. We just need them the week of June second, so. Also, just on a sidebar, this topic is obviously, I've had reopening things widespread around the state, and there's a trail going on the Auditor's affiliates yesterday where all, most counties are gonna be getting together this week or next to talk about operations. And it looks to me like the wide variety, at least coming out of the end of day yesterday, is thought processes of waiting two more weeks to open up anything, to opening up by appointment only for some. And some have been doing that already, and some soft opening like that. And then I think it's Monroe County, one of the counties to our south, may just go back to normal operations Friday or Monday, is what they're thinking, so.
They've had no cases of it.
It's.
Is that correct?
Wayne County. So it's a variety of that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna wait and see for two more weeks for full-on opening is what they're saying.
I really appreciate you bringing that up, Jake. I think for, this is me personally, and while let the other supervisors and any of the other officers speak to this, I see this as being more of a soft opening.
Me too.
I don't think we're back to some kind of normal operations and two weeks, maybe. All the models that we've looked at show the peak in Iowa being after May first, okay? And I'm going to continue to say that's the best information that we have. They even talked about it in the governor's press conferences. So there is a recognition that the peak is still a few days, maybe a week away. So I think for us to say suddenly, we'll just put the light switches on and go back to the way we were, kind of is denying that potential fact. In addition, as you know, we've got two counties right to the north of us that combined probably have a thousand cases that are known, Polk and Jasper. And if I had Kim in here, I'd get the exact numbers, but I'm sure we're about eight hundred in Polk, and we were over a hundred in Jasper. So if you look at the, just that alone, as Marion County reopens as one of the seventy-seven, we're gonna get an influx of people. We're gonna get people that want their driver's licenses. We're gonna get people that wanna come and get their records. And I can't go to my usual place of business. I'll come here. So we have to be very aware of that process. And how do we do it in an orderly way that maintains, again, safety, but provides some level of service to our customers? Michaela, let's go ahead.
So I guess what I really kind of envisioned for my office, at least for the next week, possibly two weeks, is kind of a cautionary approach, again, using that term soft opening, by appointment, but also by invitation only. So, you know, my biggest concern is, right now, the suspension of expiration dates for driver's license and motor vehicles, as of right now, is lifted on May twenty-seventh. We have a lot of expired driver's licenses out there. And even at some point, when that restriction on nonessential travel is lifted, if you wanna go to the state of Kansas, maybe the state of Iowa doesn't, you know, it doesn't recognize that expiration date, though they're giving you grace, but the state of Kansas will not. You're gonna get a citation down there for driving on an expired license. Those are the people that I would kind of like to begin to serve. I think we need to be careful about how many numbers we allow in, how many people we actually make appointments for. And, you know, we kind of have a list of people who've contacted us through Facebook, through phone, yeah, phone calls, that might meet that criteria, that we could go ahead and start to make appointments for those folks over the next couple of weeks.
So do you have their contact information to contact them?
Yes.
You have, okay. I just didn't know if you had.
Yes, and we continue to field those calls every day, anyway. I had Andrew pull the numbers between March twenty-fifth and the end of the day, April twenty-third. So over that course of twenty business days, my office received two thousand three hundred and six phone calls. Probably it was four hundred and some that were just driver's license. So all of those were, when can I get my driver's license? How can I get my driver's license, et cetera? And I would also like to limit it. There's a lot of treasurer discussion. I think this will be kind of a pretty common theme, but for right now, limit it to Marion County residents.
Good. I was just gonna say that. And then also your process and what you're going to do that so that you have.
Can we, can we, I wanna, Ed and I are exchanging glances here. This is the lawyers in the room.
That's problematic.
Yeah, Ed.
But I think that there's been a request of the governor.
Yes, there has.
Do the governor to perhaps in one of her proclamations, say that. The issue, my understanding from speaking to some people in my realm is, that's been tossed around. The problem is, it is the communities that are the largest, so from a population voter base, that are being still held to restriction. So I think, depending on how we, if we do it by appointment only, I would just say that we either need to adopt a first-come, first-served.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
Or truly random, who gets an appointment. I think if we are gonna decide based on address, who gets an appointment, that could be problematic. I think the treasurer's office, people as a whole, are gonna have to come to a solution for that. But I do think that if we willy-nilly are saying, well, this person called in, but we're gonna go ahead and do this person, that could get us in trouble in the long run.
And I, Ed, after looking over a lot of things last night, even everything that A.G. Barr is looking at, okay, from state, local, federal, how people have applied governor's orders, how people have applied local ordinances, we have, we do have to be careful of those types of issues, so.
So I think we'll see in the next three days whether or not, how strong the treasurer's lobby has been with the governor's office.
Right, right. So at least, at least in the near term, some type of randomized process, however that, however that works, unless we get some further guidance. Agreed?
Right. And I don't think there's anything wrong with saying there's, you know, they've gotten X number of phone calls and said, when this opens back up, we'd like to come in.
So they're kind of, they're kind of our first list.
Right.
Of folks, okay. Get a call back and say, hey, you guys had to wait, you get to be first in line.
Or just, we're now opening it up, go to the website, do whatever it is. Cause I mean, Andrew's done a great job with the.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Andrew's in the other room.
We, we're gonna have a system off our main website that's gonna allow people to set up an appointment. I mean, it looks awesome and it's ready, I think it's ready to go. He's been working on it.
Good, good.
Andrew? His lips are moving. Yeah.
I think we gotta unmute the other mute button.
Sorry, that was operator air on Lisa's part.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Sorry.
We, we.
I'm here.
The process in which you've put it on the website, you, you wanna expand on that?
It's not public. I have not put it on the website yet.
Okay.
But it is, it's, it can be put on the website whenever we want.
Has it been tested? Andrew, have we done a test on it or anything? I mean, we know it works?
We've, well, we've tested with the users that we've put in the system, which is myself and Andrew Myers. So we've tested in the sense that we can set appointment times for any office. We can set what the services are that offices would like to schedule times for. And we can assign those services to specific users in specific departments. So if Michaela would like to add her driver's license folks to the driver's license service in the system, we can do that in very short order and have that up and running and ready to go. And then also have that linked on our website and whatever Facebook or wherever else you'd like to post it at.
What does it do?
It is, it is a, Tyler asked what it does, and it is simply a scheduling, appointment scheduling system, so it'll last. Yeah, so a user would hit the site, and then they're offered a department to go to, so an auditor's office, treasurer's office, reporter's office, whatever offices we'd like to put in there. They select the department, and then it shows the services that we put in the services. So for the treasurer's office, we put in things like driver's license renewals, motor vehicle tax renewals, paying property taxes, those types of things. And then we can assign the service to specific staff members. And then those services are also assigned a time slot. So when you go to book time, you can go and pick your time slot. And if a time, and if a time slot is booked for that user, then it goes away and it's hidden. So then if Michaela has two or three driver's license people, once three, two people have been booked for that time slot, then that time slot's no longer available.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
It's pretty slick. Can you launch that for just driver's license and add other functions later?
Yes, we can, we can go and hide. I've got several offices in there, just as an example, to show what it could look like. But I can certainly hide any offices until they are open.
Excellent.
Great job, Andrew. Thank you.
Yeah, good work. So if we're ready to start that process, I mean, is it, is it the consensus, especially for the folks at East, to do an appointment-only system?
Carrie, you're kind of the other one.
At least for the next two weeks.
Right. Right now, I'm not sure that we can do passports. The federal office is closed except for emergencies, medical or disaster. So those we won't be able to do right now. I'm kind of with Mark. Two weeks, maybe. I really think we're gonna peak, hit May first, and once things start opening up, I think things are gonna get worse. I hate to feel that way, but I really do. However, once you open up, cause I kind of was led to believe that you might open up by appointment only, maybe before I would. I just want you to know that we would do, we know people are gonna come in, and they're not gonna have all their records. It just happens. They come over, they don't have the right birth certificate, they don't have a real marriage license. We will take those. You just send them down to us. We do want to limit it, maybe limit two people at a time in our office, with the others maybe in the hall. I've ordered Plexiglas barriers. They're not here. It'll be two, probably two to three weeks before they're here. But absolutely.
Two extra ones you could use.
Okay.
I have some extras.
Awesome.
I have some extras as well.
Awesome.
So you and I probably should get together and kind of found out what that should look like.
Yeah, I think birth certificate, vital records in general are gonna be what we're gonna open up first by appointment only. But definitely, when you, if you open before we technically tell the public we're gonna open, we will take care of those people.
Cause I wondered.
Working with to make sure they get their records.
If we shouldn't slow, meaning like do Michaela first, do that for whether it's a week, and then possibly start May eleventh with your, you know.
Kind of to slow the people.
Could I do something in perspective here, just for all department heads to think about? Right now, Marion County is kind of in, we're kind of unique in the situation that we're in, because we're dealing with a temporary location right now. And I know the operation, it's not only the technical side of the operation, it's what Chris's crew and everybody's had to do for the physical side of it to make it work at East Elementary. What I would like everybody to think about is in the future, our operations going forward, when we move out of East Elementary, when we get to the courthouse, how do we want that to look? I mean, we need to consider that, because we may have to make some changes during this construction phase to make the operations work how we want them to work in the future.
So, so Steve, I think, yeah, let's, let's not forget that.
But I mean, it's all tied together. Right now, immediately, our immediate need at East Elementary, I get, I get that.
So let's get it, let's get a process.
Appointment, though, yeah.
Let's get a process in place for where we are. But I think the second part of that discussion, Steve's exactly right, is we don't know where we'll be.
No, we don't.
With this whole thing in three months, four months, or what, Chris, what do you think is a rough guess on when we start to repopulate the courthouse?
As well as things are going right now. I, what did you say?
September sixteenth was just the date that you told me, or like, no.
It'll August.
Jason, you said September sixteenth?
No, 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 no.
All right. I think we still, we still.
Might as well start the rumor now.
Exactly.
I think we still focus on, because of our, the new world that we live in, and before I answer the date, Steve, I've already done a lot of work. We're revamping the treasurer's office, especially the driver's license signs. I've got plans drawn up for it that are going to limit public access to it, that are gonna funnel the public into individual, almost what's called them stalls, for some privacy. I've got pellet glass already quoting barriers, full-time glass barriers on every window in the courthouse where you will be conducting business. So a lot of that stuff's already in place.
I just didn't know if everybody was aware of what we're thinking.
We still focus on November as a move-in date. I would tell you, and I'm not gonna publicly say we move in earlier, I would tell you that things are going extremely well at the courthouse. We look to be a month ahead of schedule right now.
That's great. But let me, let me take a quick step back. I, November, November, November's fine. I mean, I wouldn't publicize any aggressive date like Jason wants to be in there in July.
Yeah. Sheriff said July.
So we don't, but what we do want to do, whatever you're working on, Steve, with Chris, on getting all those barriers up, we need to have a couple of test run-throughs with our own staff. How will traffic flow?
That's my point. It's not only the technical side of it, it is physically overwhelming for everybody to even make East Elementary function.
That's, and that's where I was hoping, depending upon what.
So you gotta do a couple of things here. East Elementary, we were using, and our theory has been to use Michaela's DOT group kind of as the guinea pig for a soft open. I'll just be blunt. It seemed to make sense to start there. We wait, maybe for another week, for other offices. So we still do what we're doing right now, but we don't go into any kind of soft open for recorder until we see how it works. For Michaela. And, and very specifically for driver's license.
Correct, yes.
Okay? But once we see how that works, we're still going to have to do some level of crowd control within the confines of East. And, and I'm really not wanting to expand our square footage. The guys have done a tremendous job.
We really don't have any more square footage.
They've done where else to go.
We don't have much more square footage.
So, so if somebody said, hey, in order for me to function, I need an additional, you know, five thousand square feet to make my office, I'd say, no, we're gonna figure out how to make your office work within its current construct. So if everybody is okay with that, Michaela kind of becomes, and her group becomes the guinea pigs for how we do traffic control, with the appointment system, all of those things. We get the bugs worked out, and then we start to open up some of the other offices for that. When we get to the courthouse, though, same rules apply. We have to think about traffic flow in and out of the courthouse. It may be we don't have all doors open.
I think you should consider that.
Okay? I think that's a fair.
Yeah.
I think that's a fair thing to consider right now. I'm sorry, Jake.
Yeah, I, sorry.
No, this is Jason, speak up.
This is, I think this is a good opportunity when we move back to at least strongly consider only having one public access to the building.
Again, we wanna maximize, we wanna maximize safety of our employees, we wanna maximize safety of our, and we wanna serve the public. We gotta balance those two. I don't wanna take risks that I don't have to take. And if we can still provide excellent customer service and maximize safety of our staff through restricted accesses, access points, I'm fine with that. I have no problem with that.
Mark, I have a question. So this is kind of, and it's because I'm by the door and I hear what Daryl's hearing. We have people right now, lawyer's office, everything is shut down. They're wanting notaries. I mean, that's not a service we have to provide, but they're, I think the clerk's office, you guys are not notaries, correct? So then all the rest of, I know that's been an issue a few times. What's your thoughts mean for Daryl? What does he tell people that come and they want them to spend a notary?
I tell them to go to banks, law offices.
And those are closed as well. So that's the problem is.
If they call a bank, they will let them have that.
But it's not, I mean, here's.
We're not here to solve everybody's problem.
They will let them.
It's not a service we provide. Thank you for stopping by.
And so, yeah, I guess, Jason, that is something, just give Daryl that direction. That's been one of the questions people knocked in on the door for me.
Well, and I don't wanna, I mean, I, I wanna do what you guys do in your openings type of things, but I mean, even my three out at the sheriff's office are notaries. I mean, so if it was something you wanted to provide, but I don't wanna have people come to get things notarized when you guys aren't opening up, you know, I don't wanna be.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
I mean, yeah, I'll just, I'll tell Daryl just to say, you know, right now.
We don't offer that service.
Give us a little bit of time or whatever on it.
By the amount of documents we're recording, there are notaries out there.
Okay.
Banks are providing that, real state offices.
Yeah, yeah.
Chris, can you talk us through, in the next, if we are legitimately thinking two to three weeks to test things out? When do you think, like handicap parking signs we put up, like parking, I think we gotta figure out something to do with the parking lot that the majority of us park in from designating where a prisoner transport vehicle can be, and signage. When removing the chairs, all that stuff, do you think two weeks is reasonable, if they call that would be done?
I think that's reasonable. I think the thing we need to think about here is, number one, you're already parking, everybody, I've stressed this, and I still see it happening. Department heads, you need to tell your people they need to park in the parking lot. It's not acceptable to park on the street. Unacceptable to park on the street. I've said it three times now, and I still see employees parked on the street. I know it's closer to the front door. You can't park on the street because that is where the public is going to park. So if we're talking about soft opening, we need to ensure that the street access around, so there's three sides to East Elementary, that is public parking. Okay? The city has authorized us to take up all of that curbside parking if it be for the public. My estimation, as I went out and measured, is it offers roughly the same amount of parking, not including any of the south parking lot, as you currently have around the square. Okay? So we have the parking capacity, just parking end to end on our, around the curb on three sides. The south side of East Elementary School is also public parking. That is not ideal public parking for people that need handicap spots. So the handicap parking, I will have a sign, one sign on the north side, and I will have three signs on the west side by the handicap ramp. So at least one handicap access point on the north side if they're coming in to see anybody that's on the above area. If they're coming in to vote or to go to driver's license, since we'll have the other handicap ramp built shortly indoors, is they'll have three handicap spots there. So that stuff's not an issue. The biggest thing that I need to stress is the parking lot is more than sufficient for every county employee. As far as prisoner transport goes, I don't think we need signage there because the conversation that I've had with Justin when they bring uh, prisoners over, is they literally pull up because the public is not using the east set of doors that is employee entrance. They pull up basically right behind your office head where you sit. Okay. They pull up and park that van right there. They immediately walk it right, right inside. If they have an issue where you have a prisoner that needs handicap access points, we can park on the west side and they can come up through the ramp.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. We haven't been bringing a lot of prisoners around, but has anybody been, there's, I guess my only concern would be if it's not marked, nobody else is parking in those spots.
It's, it's basically in a place, the, the dumpster sits here, the doors sit here.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, it, it, it's not something that I would think a normal person would want to park there anyway, cause it doesn't look like a parking spot.
That's where I park when I, when I'm working.
Walk right into that one.
So that would be my only concern is if they show up and.
If I need to get some paint out and paint a line saying, you know, with a big X through it and just let your van driver know when he can park on the X.
You know, I think the trouble we're gonna have, Chris, on, on the west side is the people in the apartment complex.
Yeah, so I, my, my plan is to put handicap signs up along that stretch and then we'll have to rely on city enforcement to ensure, because the, I, I've looked at that, the apartment complex across from the, the west entrance has parking behind the building. Right now about three of those residents park directly in front of the west doors. I, I'm, my assumption is when they put handicap signs up, they're gonna look at that and be like, hey, I probably shouldn't park here anymore. If I need to have a nice conversation with them, I'm glad they do that. But the main thing is we need to get all county employees and all state employees to start parking in the confines of the east parking lot, which is the old asphalt playground. And if I need to go out and draw lines to make sure that we're parking properly, I mean, I think we're all adult enough, we don't, probably don't need lines on the pavement, but if we do, we'd be happy to do that. Just let's get everybody moved over to that point.
Kurt, well, how do you do that if you need that done? He's, he's got the equipment too.
You may be happy to do it. I wouldn't be.
I'm always happy to do everything, Steve.
He does it to jerk all the time. He's been that.
So, Mark, can I transition to a slightly different topic? Well, I, let me, before you go there, Ed, uh, are we pretty well settled though? We're gonna do an experiment here with Michaela's DOT group?
I think that's the wisest thing to do.
We're going to turn on the appointment system for Michaela's group, test it out, make sure it works. Andrew, you're gonna make, monitor that?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Turned on, uh, uh, Michaela and I will work out when to turn it on, but I'll turn, I'll put it up there this week.
Perfect.
Okay.
I'm hoping this week that we'll have that inside ramp done in case she has to have handicap accessibility to the.
And honestly.
Well, and then, and then we've got signage. Do we need interior signage as well? So people know where to go?
We probably should.
We, we will. I don't know what that is gonna say yet or how we're gonna make them or whatever.
Okay.
Who can cut vinyl here? Sign shop here, can't they?
Oh, yeah.
Then we'll just have to look at getting some signs made up. Maybe Jeff's department can get, get Randy on that. We can.
Jeff in between, yeah.
We can get some posted.
So we've got, so we've got interior signage, we're going to deal with parking issues.
I also think we need to have exterior signage too.
Yeah, interior, exterior, okay.
When we talk about interior, like to have something sitting right outside the hall for people, I mean, if you put it above the door, let's face it, they don't. You know what I mean? So hallway signage, so as they're walking out.
Eye, eye level, you're, you're talking eye level.
Like, yep, like the bathroom signs are right, you know, out there.
We could build some brackets and then just have a small metal sign was the original thought, then we could just screw it into that bracket so it's actually facing the hallway double sided. You can see it from either direction.
What are we signing?
Well, I think you need to just sign.
Each office?
There are clearly, if you're gonna vote, I think Jake has thought it through and we're gonna have a bunch of little signs that say vote here, but there, we do know that if you're coming to get your driver's license, that's a different entrance that you probably are gonna use than if you're just going to pay your taxes or go to the assessor's office.
Maybe, maybe not.
Well, but, but somehow if you're a person driving around, you're not gonna know where you're supposed to park. And then if we are gonna do the, the control, crowd control with having a staging area for court and potentially we're gonna have to have signage that tells people, so when someone goes and checks in at the clerk's office and they're now for the last 50 years been told to go to the courtroom, now they're not. They're gonna be told to go to staging room A. Then we need to have some way to say, cause staging room A is a long ways away from the court. As far away from the courtrooms as it can possibly be. And these people are not necessarily the folks who.
Yeah, you know, you're, we, we need to make it as clear and unambiguous to the pop, to the population as we can, no matter who we're dealing with.
Absolutely.
I, I think that's only, that's only fair for everybody. They're walking into a building, they're maybe not familiar with it. They need to be able to see things immediately to know where they're going and it only helps us to get people in and out. Right?
Exactly.
You don't want people wandering around going, I don't know where I'm supposed to go.
And asking questions.
Right. So.
That's obvious.
What's that?
That's obvious. We, we, we were planning on signing, we just don't figure it out. We're gonna figure out.
Well, good. Let's do that.
And what?
The, the other thing is, um, we need to come up with probably a press release once we get this started and talk about how we want to open. So we get it out to the public. Just like with the restaurants, as I've talked to Chamber of Commerce and other Knoxville restaurants, managing customer expectations is as important as what the governor said we can do. Cause customers may not have paid a lick of attention of what the governor's order said. Take Capella as a case in point. Okay? And you've got, you've got restaurants over there trying to do crowd control and people standing outside saying, why can't I come in and buy my food? Why can't I come? They opened them up. No, you don't, you didn't hear the whole thing. So I think we need to get some things out telling people how we're going to operate as a courthouse. And whether that's posted on website, media, radio, we need, and that's a message we'll reinforce.
Do we have an aerial? Something I was thinking that we put in the, the papers that just say, this is where East Elementary School is, this is where you park, you know, with the design telling people where to park that also could.
You have a little schematic. Sure, we can work on something like that. I think that's good.
It'd be easy to get an aerial.
I think that's good.
And then you could just have arrows coming to, if you did want to come in those certain doors, you could say recorder's office, driver's license, whatever, that, for that door. So they are coming in the easiest access to get to whatever office.
I, I, I get a little nervous Jason about giving people too much of the schematic of the, just the, again, is the safety. Kind of goes against the other side, right? Where you tell people, here's the layout of the building.
Well, no, I'm not thinking, but I'm just saying.
He's just saying what door you come in.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, external view only.
Yeah.
We're not gonna tell them what room it is. We're just gonna say, if you're coming in the recorder's, you come in. Or clerk's corridor.
No, that sounds good.
And maybe we put one at every door like that.
Okay.
Right.
In regards to the scheduling, I think it is important that we continue to think about as department heads, think about how, when we move back into the courthouse, how we can continue to use that.
Absolutely. I, we would love to do that with the passports.
Well, so you raised a good point and I wanna get to it, Ed, kinda, Ed, I know you, we're gonna have a different topic here. But, the other thing to think about as we start to reopen, we've got an appointment system that we're gonna test out. We've got technology that we've utilized during the time we're closed. How does that change your operation? How does it still serve the public?
Right.
And get the job done that we need to get done? But how do we leverage that more effectively? While we're getting toward going back to the courthouse? There isn't, so anyway, you gotta think about that. I don't know that there's an answer yet for it, Keesha. There's not an answer yet, right?
Nope, nope.
So as department heads be thinking about that. Because we're still gonna, we want to regulate the, the traffic flow in that building. And if we get stuff done online, let's do it online.
Yep.
There, there ain't no, there's no reason, if, if there's.
Cause it's gonna come from them as department heads, you stressing it that people will do it. It's no difference when the court said, we're doing, gonna e-file. You know, it's the same thing, you know.
I, I've talked to Michaela about payment, payment methods. There is no, I do not understand why we don't have some form of electronic Apple Pay.
People cringe because they have to pay that convenience fee.
Yeah, but it is what it is. It's been a total loss.
But when you think about what we're talking about, you don't have to touch anything. That, that makes no sense to not have that as an offering for what we do. Nobody should be handling cash anyway in this day and age. It's the only group, I mean, financial services, nobody handles cash because of audit issues. We still handle cash.
My group of people was really, I've gone and probably from one in five being paper permits to maybe one in 15. I mean, they, everybody, even if I have to, they call me and we have to walk through it, like I'm looking at it from my end, the online is going really well. So.
Good.
I'm glad we had it in place.
Good. Very good. So, Ed, you had a.
I was just gonna, I have two things. One is, uh, Kelly, do you, I'm assuming we're gonna be open June 1st. Do you think that's a realistic timeframe? So, all the thing kinks that we need to work out for everybody else, I hope we have worked out by June 1st because when we open June, that first Monday after June 1st, we're gonna have a lot of people in that building and we're gonna have, Andrew's been great to work with, we've ordered a couple of televisions, we're gonna put some things up for crowd control. Just bear with us that first week of June. For all the other electives, please bear with the courts the first week of June, cause I think it could have the potential to be absolute chaos with the number of people. Uh, the second thing, and I know it's not a popular comment, I would ask this board again to consider relaxing the quarantine if you travel restriction. I, I think that if I travel to go see my parents who have been on lockdown in their own home and I travel from my home to their home and I come back, or I travel to go see my kid and I come back, I don't know how, the amount of exposure that we're gonna get when Jake opens to vote next week, walking around the building, using the restrooms, all of those type of things. I think if we trust our employees, I, I don't know why we'd want them using their 14 extra paid sick days from COVID. You know, if we're taking our temperatures and we're monitoring, that's just my two cents. I just throw it out again.
And you're thinking domestic travel, right, Ed?
Dom, absolutely, domestic travel.
I thought, I was thinking about this last night and with, with the fact that we've got as many cases in Blackhawk County where my son is at right now, you know, we, we're gonna have 1,500 cases there today probably. So you traveled to the county Iowa. You know, and we can't say you go and travel from the confines of Marion County. So I'm in favor of doing that. We'll put that on our next agenda, Ed.
I don't have a problem with it either.
I, and I, I agree.
I think domestic.
I've had employees that ask or whatever, I mean, on whether it be weddings, family get-togethers, different things, that as long as they're reasonable, they drive there with their family, they come back, I mean.
Jake, would you make a note to have that on agenda?
So do you want that, um?
We can even do that tomorrow.
You just do it?
Yeah, it's part of a COVID discussion, so we can just do that.
Tomorrow is the last day of your ongoing.
So what we'll do is, um.
Should we do it today?
No. Oh yeah, you absolutely could. It has to do with ongoing actions.
Well, I guess we're good.
Come out of clothes and put it on.
We're not enclosed.
Yeah, we're not enclosed. So, um, yeah, to give you a little idea, so this will be the last week we have our rolling meetings, Jake.
Yeah.
Next week, what I'd like to go to is maybe twice a week. So we'll start to scale this down. Our press briefings are gonna go down to one. We're gonna just start to scale it down unless something happens where it's got a balloon back up. And we, and we change. And hopefully that doesn't happen. But I think it sends a signal publicly too that, okay, if, if the states, we followed the lead of the feds and the state, and if they're saying relax the rules, let's relax the rules. Let's rely on our good common sense. Everybody uses that term and I hate it because we know what common sense has got us so far. So, so we'll go from there.
So Jake, are you saying today was the last day we had our roller meeting? Actually, it's the 30, it's posted through the 30th of the year, which is tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
And then you guys are gonna decide how you want it to proceed.
Yeah, but I have no problem. If we, if anybody wanted to make a motion to relax the, uh, the, uh, travel, the domestic travel restriction, we could do that now. I have no problem with that, unless somebody has an objection.
So moved.
Well, you know, what, you know, okay, what does that mean, relax it? I mean, do we have, we have to define that somehow or just?
You can travel domestically it within the United States.
I know what that means.
Well, what else do you want?
It's too hard to.
Does it matter to you on air, but, of going by air versus by car? The only thing I mean, um.
Yeah, that's kinda what I get. What does that mean?
I think that we need to consider, at this point, if you don't need to do trainings and that such, let's limit that, my, in my belief, but I understand those that need to.
Family.
Yep, your families, yep.
Well, yeah, you gotta be careful. You end up making this so. I don't wanna be like the governor of Michigan. Either we agree now that we can begin to relax domestic travel restrictions for whatever reason. We're not talking about business traffic. We're talking about personal traffic. Those are the two distinctions. You wanna still limit business or non-essential business travel? We can do that all day long.
Okay, then yes, that's what I would prefer to do. Limit business travel and the domestic, um, so, that's what their, their choice.
So the motion would be the board of supervisors lifting the restriction on domestic travel for personal reasons. County employees. Agreed?
Agreed.
All right. Any, and Keesha, you're making a motion?
I made the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
So just to read back to make sure I have it, um, you lifted the restriction on domestic travel for personal reasons. Um, Combs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Good comment. Anything else we need to talk about for soft opening? Uh, this is gonna be an ongoing discussion, folks, as we think about it, as we see how Michaela's works. And we continue to go forward in this reopening phase. Any questions from the other room?
Yeah, so any guidance on personnel restrictions that we've put in the place? You know, we're gonna start opening the public lots more exposure potential. I don't know, can we relax any of our people that we've been with for 40 hours a week, uh, restrictions yet?
Is he talking about the break area, cafeteria?
Oh, we're talking about 10 people.
I mean, we're six feet in this room right now. So, can we relax that when our crews are out in the open air?
You're talking about the 10 or less, Tyler?
No, I'm talking about, we, we have instructed employees not to be within six feet of each other.
I think that still applies.
And Mark?
You're gonna be.
For, for road crews, road crews that we're talking about, Tyler?
Yeah, but we're gonna be within six feet of the public. How, how long?
It, and I, and I, and I get, and I get it. We, a, as we go through lifting these restrictions, we're gonna find all kinds of exceptions. But until we get somebody from a, a state or federal perspective that says social distancing no longer applies in a workplace environment, which it doesn't, they haven't said that at all, I don't know how we relax those restrictions.
But I think maybe we're, we're all saying something slightly different. What I hear Tyler say first, six feet social distancing did, has never applied in a workplace setting, unless someone tells me differently, because we may very well have in my office desks that are closer than six feet.
It's supposed to.
Well, I'm just trying to think for his, his.
It's supposed to.
I don't know how you do any road project. What I hear Tyler saying is I can't do any road project.
I, 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 I get, I get it. I saw DOT guys out there standing two feet apart, okay? So.
Yeah, you're right, do your best, you do your best.
You gotta do your best with it to, to function, Tyler, so, you know, we can't, it's, it's no different than fitness centers, so the guidance came out for fitness centers. How do you put treadmills six feet apart in a fitness center and expect that fitness center to make any money? That's just dumb, okay? So we all agree, that's dumb, but, and not workable. So we're not gonna take any official board, just, just best judgment, okay? Best judgment to get the job done and do what we have to do.
We, yeah, we, we limit the conjuring and, you know, if, if they're trying to, no difference than some of these businesses that not opening up their cafeterias or their lunchrooms.
Common areas are closed, but you can still sell food. Whatever, you know?
We try cuffing people from six foot away.
Let's just taze them all.
We've moved in closer now, so.
You don't just toss them by handcuffs, ask them to do their own.
The ones that comply, yes, but the other ones, I mean, there's every now and then.
Drone cuffing mechanism, right?
Every now and then it's got cupper, so.
Tyler, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, from what I've heard in previous meetings, you've kind of left it up to the department heads anyway. If I ask, where's, is there any specific guidance to relax?
Let's just keep it that way for now, Tyler. Use your best judgment. I think the, the, the biggest thing is, if, if you have employees that are, here's what, here's the biggest thing. If you have employees that get sick, if you come to work sick in this environment, a manager had better send that person home. And, and what I would do is instruct your staff, just don't do it. So I know Americans, we don't wanna burn our sick time, we don't wanna use our vacation time, and we're really tough people, so we can come to work with a sniffle. Don't do it, just don't do it. And understand that that's going to put your entire department at ill ease with you. Not to mention the public, just coming in and saying, hey, I saw somebody in the treasurer's office sneezing their brains out, and they're still working, and that'd be great, so.
Mark, for individuals who have individuals working remotely, and it's working, quite honestly, I think some of my people are more productive working remotely. Is there guidance that you are providing for the board of supervisors? I know that in, prior to COVID nineteen, we did not have a policy as a county that people could work from home. Like we had just the opposite.
Yes.
Is there a date certain that you are envisioning where our work from home policies are going to go back to as they're enumerated in the handbook? Is it June first, is it May fifteenth?
I'm looking at May fifteenth as a way to review that, Ed.
Okay, so that's a Friday, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I think we continue on with that strategy for now, until about May fifteenth, and we see where we stand. Especially for those of you who have at-risk, any at-risk employees, um, for this, we don't wanna, we don't wanna relax that yet or change that. And I do believe, Ed, you got a, you have a great point, I mean, we're gonna be relooking, I've already kind of teed it up, I, I think I mentioned it to Lisa, if I did, and I'm mentioning to her now. We need to take a look at how we function from an HR policy standpoint, this has changed a lot. We do have the ability to work from home and make it work, I think, okay? So are there other options? There's always been this view, if I have everybody in the office, I can watch everybody and make sure they get their job done. Same thing in the private sector, where it's gone from, let's, everybody be in an office, to work from home, to back in the office, to now everybody's gonna be working from home again. So I think we can start thinking about more creative ways to make work-life balance a little bit different for folks. But we gotta give that some thought, we're gonna be talking to all of you about how that worked in your respective departments, so. Understanding some departments, it doesn't, it doesn't apply.
The people that work from home, to me, if, if we were looking at that in the future, it would be people that would, jobs would, would not require them to have any public interaction. You know, if, if they need public interaction, then obviously they can't always do that from home, they have to be in a setting.
Right, but if, two years from now, if we've reduced the amount of foot traffic to the courthouse by sixty or seventy percent, that's a pipe dream. But it may lend itself to having people who are processing online payments and things like that from home instead of coming into an office.
If they don't have to have that interaction.
Just be mindful and, and spread this to your employees. When you're at home working from that eight to four-thirty and you're a full-time employee, be mindful what you're posting, what you're doing. People are watching.
Well, let's, let's be more specific, what you're posting on your own social media accounts. If you're at home, and I'm not on social media, I, well, no, I, I'm lying. I just got back on Twitter, so I could follow President Trump. I finally decided I, I needed to get my laugh of the day in on a, on a tweet, he does such a great job. But other than that, I'm not, but what I've heard is, some people, while they're up, while they're working from home, are posting stuff on their social media page. Be careful, in the private sector, employers watch that.
I don't even know what Twitter is.
Yeah, there, there's not enough, you, you couldn't put enough words on it for a few of them, so. So just be mindful of those things, uh, as you go forward, okay? We'll continue to have this discussion, is there anything, the only thing we didn't talk about, Jason, was your office with, with, as far as gun permits, those things.
Been working well.
Has it worked out?
Not, not a lot of problems in regards to it, people can still come, drop off their information, we process it. So I would, I, I don't wanna open up sooner than what everybody else does. I mean, I, I would do exactly what you guys wanna do, I mean, along those lines and whatever you think's easier, if it's, if we, if you wanna do a soft thing, we can, like Michaela, if you wanna give it another week or two, we can do that too, I'm, I'm comfortable either way.
Okay, well, let's start, let's start with Michaela and then see how that works.
Do it another week and then.
Cause you've probably got a similar type of flow into your office.
Yeah, and, and most people have been very good about it. I mean, they, they understand, I mean, we're trying to reduce it, and we haven't had a ton of complaints, so, I mean, I, maybe we'll plan a week from now, or you know, or something to do it.
You could also probably do, if they wanted to, you know, for IT-wise, to sign up and schedule them.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, the, the one thing that, and, and I need to talk to Chris about it, is, we've, in the past, there's been a lot of discussions, even on our courthouse safety committees and different things, about the plexiglass or glass or different things, and the public relation aspect of it, and some people hate looking through it. I think modern, I think, I, I used to be one of those, it's like, I hated going and talking to somebody through something of glass. I mean, why is, it felt like there was that barrier? I think in today's day and age, we're, we're getting there, so it's probably something that we're, for our front office, gonna start looking at also, and, I mean, maybe just in the middle, but my question to that is, has there ever been any research to know, like, if you look at our front lobby, when you come in there, we shut the doors, we have the pull-up metal door, in that space, whether you put a piece of plexiglass or regular glass right in the middle of it, and keep the bottom open to hand stuff underneath, or keep an opening at the top, has there ever been any studies to know, should there be a little hole, I mean, to keep?
For communication-wise, I don't know how they hear very well.
So there actually has been, and I've been looking at a few of them.
Okay.
So, ideal situation is going to be a slot big enough to pass an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper in, and that protrudes half the distance of two inches below the countertop, so an inch below countertop and an inch above countertop, and then a talk box. So the talk box, they, the holes don't line up on both ends, so supposedly spit particles can go through. So there actually is research, and it's been really engaging studying.
I guess my question is, when you look at that for the courthouse, the new, the new design, when you look at it, however it's, the less intrusive, but yet the safest for the employee and the public, I guess if we can kind of come to that medium ground, you know, cause you don't want it to feel like, I mean.
You're criminal anyways when you, yeah.
Yes, that you're, you're a criminal, they're trying to do visitation with somebody, but on the other hand, we want it safe enough to do it, so whatever you guys.
I'd say if you wish to conduct visits with me, this is how we're doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, which is, I mean, is one way to go, I mean.
That's what I'm quoting right now, Sheriff, uh, at the courthouse, and I've got dimensions for your windows, I've already given those dimensions off as well.
Okay.
So my intention is, the world has changed, um, I'm not looking at, you know, really high-end anything. I'm looking at glass, not plexiglass. Problem with plexiglass is simple, it gets dust on it, and you don't use a special dampening agent, you scratch it immediately. So I don't wanna replace plexiglass every month, that's extreme cost. So we're looking at gl- glass, it is an upfront cost to do it, but at the end of the day, you're talking about a product that we can probably utilize for the next twenty to thirty years, assuming you all don't take people off and they throw stuff at it, so.
Make ours a little thicker.
But that is, I've already, I've already got that in the works.
Okay, well, I just, I just, when you guys are thinking about it, I know it's, it's always been a discussion on how do you, how do you balance that, so I, I know you guys are thinking, but something we'll do down the road too.
Good, good, very good.
Then I will hold up, just, I will hold off then to, I mean, on opening for another week.
Okay, appreciate that, Sheriff. Uh, Steve, anything from conservation that we need to address right now, as far, other than your phone calls?
Um, yeah, I need a gross of your cards so I can hand them out. As we all know, the governor's proclamation was extended as far as campgrounds, yards, cabins, and playgrounds are all closed until, uh, Friday, the fifteenth of May at eleven fifty-nine PM, which basically means we can't open our doors or gates until that Saturday morning, which is somewhat problematic, cause we had about ninety reservations starting on that Friday. So we have to contact each and every one of those people and redo their reservations. So, but it is what it is, the state campgrounds apparently are gonna open on Friday morning, I'm not sure how that works, but, um, they, either the governor's allowing them to do that, or they sent on a press release that was erroneous, and they have to do the same thing we do, is open on Saturday. But, um, right now, we're planning on opening the campgrounds, like at Marion County Park on Saturday morning, and at Roberts Creek on Saturday morning, and the cabins at Cordova. We were originally going to do just a self-contained units only, but we kind of wanna see how the numbers stack up in the next couple of weeks. But right now, we're looking at just opening up all of the campgrounds and the facilities in the campgrounds, that's the showers and restrooms. The shower building at Marion County Park is big enough where we may have some issues with the ten or less in the restroom. So we're going to post that, please keep your social distancing, no more than ten people in the restroom at a time. And then we're also going to keep the, of course, playgrounds closed, the ballfields closed, and any shelter houses closed, and again, the reason for that is because of that ten or less social gathering. We get a number of calls, people asking, why can't I just drive through the park? That's the reason, is because if we allow people to do that, they start to congregate, and pretty soon, we've got twenty-five kids on a playground, and it's really hard to enforce that. So, um, at Roberts Creek, those campgrounds, like I say, will be open. Those restroom facilities and showers, social gatherings aren't a problem because they're not designed for large groups. We have one playground, uh, on the west side, we're gonna keep that closed, at least for the time being. And then the rangers, as they interact with the people, um, we're gonna wear masks. So we know we're gonna have out-of-staters, we're gonna have people from all different, uh, places in Iowa. So again, trying to protect my staff and having them wear the protective, uh, clothing as best we possibly can and still provide good service, that's our goal. Um, the trails, of course, are still open, the observation tower at Cordova, we think we're gonna go ahead and open that, but again, post it, please no more than ten people at, at a time. The pavilion at Cordova, which is geared towards large groups of four hundred, we're gonna, that's gonna remain closed for a while. We wanna see again how these numbers, um, for exposures go before we open that up, because that's gonna be our problem area. We have a lot of weddings and reunions scheduled. We hate to cancel them, but we wanna wait at least till the end of May and see where we're at. So far, we refunded about seventeen thousand dollars in, uh, cancellations through, uh, April eighth. If we have to, if we were to go through Memorial Day, if she actually extended the proclamation through the holiday, we'd be in the twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar refund area. So we're, we're hopeful, knock on wood, that she lets us open up on the sixteenth. The Corps of Engineers has already pulled the trigger, they're not opening up their campgrounds till after the holiday on June first. So that's gonna put additional pressure on us. We're getting calls every day about, you know, first come, first served sites, when are they gonna open? And, you know, it's so fluid, like we all know, it's hard to give them the correct information every day, excuse me, cause it changes, it seems like, that's why we listen to the governor every morning at eleven to see if she's gonna tweak it. So, again, we're, we're trying the best we can, we know people are frustrated, we're starting to get the calls now, and, and we're as frustrated as they are, cause we can't get opened up. So we're trying, we're doing the best we can, but some people just don't wanna hear what you have to say. So, again, we're hoping for the, the sixteenth, that we can start getting some of these areas open, and people can start getting out and enjoying the parks more, so that's where we're at.
So Steve, as it gets closer to the sixteenth, and the governor's order firms up, and you don't see any changes to that, we probably should, we, we think about some kind of press release, something telling people what's going on, or would that be maybe create an excessive, uh, demand?
I, I think a press rela- a written press release would be good, Mark, where it's actually, where they can see it and read it and digest it. And could we put that on the, uh, joint communication information website for that? I noticed the city, they just, they have it, like, the city of Knoxville has theirs, and they just extended. Can we do something like that in just a little bit more detail?
Yep.
And tell people through that site to, to get full information and clarity there?
Yeah.
Clarity's.
Absolutely, we can do that, Steve, so as you get closer to that date, and you don't see the governor making another change, or even if you wanna put something out there on there now, saying the governor has extended this till May fifteenth, uh, we're waiting to see what further guidance we get, we'll let you know as soon as we get it, or something like that.
Yep, that'd be, that'd be great.
So maybe, uh, yeah, maybe before you head out, talk to Jamie, and we can start to draft something up and put it on there.
Steve, do you need to get?
I appreciate that.
Steve, do you need to get clarity though, from the statewide, if, if it is the fifteenth?
Right, right now is the fifteenth, the problem comes in is if she changes that anytime from now until the fifteenth, where she could, she could say, okay, we're gonna open playgrounds, we're gonna open shelter houses. She could, she could do a number of different things that would affect us going forward in these next three weeks. That's the problem we've been running into, is people can call today, and I can tell them exactly what we're gonna do, but tomorrow, if she changes it, the people I talked to today, I've given them the wrong information.
No, I'm just talking about the parks, if, if statewide, she's saying the fifteenth, they're able to open up versus you the sixteenth, just wanting to make sure, if you wanted to get some clarity there.
Yeah, the DNR, and, and I've asked for that from our state office, the DNR came out last week with a press release that said they are closed through Thursday, the fourteenth, at eleven fifty-nine PM, which means they can open up Friday morning, first thing. The governor's proclamation says that all other campgrounds, yards, cabins, and playgrounds are closed until the fif- till eleven fifty-nine PM, Friday night on the fifteenth.
Okay.
So there's a one-day discrepancy there, we're not sure what the deal is, if the governor gave the state parks a one-day reprieve or what, so we're trying to get clarification, but right now, we're gonna go with what the proclamation says.
Right.
Okay.
Affecting us.
Yeah, that's good, all right. So, anything else, Steve?
No, but thank you for letting me update you.
You bet, appreciate, anybody else in that room, any updates, anything they need to, from a soft opening standpoint? Okay.
Hearing nothing.
Okay. Why don't we plan on, we won't, maybe Jake make a note, we probably should regroup next week, what, Thursday?
Yeah.
Ask Michaela how things went?
We're going. So speaking of that, do we want to be looking like Tuesday, Thursday next week for our meeting?
Yeah, I think that would be Tuesday, Thursday, yeah, yeah.
With the same type of agenda that you've been.
Same type of agenda, Jake, yeah.
What I'll probably do in that situation because of the days is just do an individual one out on Monday and an individual one out on Wednesday.
Okay.
And that way, if you have any other items of action you want to take, you could do that.
Cause we we plan on meeting through tomorrow.
Tomorrow is the last day.
And so we're not going to meet on Friday. We'll just take a break on Friday. Two, so Tuesday, Thursday next week, we'll plan on getting this group back together on Thursday. And talk a little bit about how things went, plan on our next steps and go from there.
Yeah, we'll have four days in.
Anybody object? This is your opportunity. Anybody object?
Mark, are we planning on meeting at nine then next Thursday?
Yep.
Okay.
And we're probably, guys, we're probably in this cycle, back to Steve's point. Until we get back in the courthouse and maybe even after that. I'm not saying on a weekly basis, but I think we're going to start having some regular sessions. To talk about how we're handling the things going on depending on where this COVID goes. I think we need to stay on top of it, keep communicating, keep having those discussions. Um, it may not be weekly, it may be bi-weekly. But uh last thing, and it really goes, Chris, to the idea of, or what's what you said about when we could. The most conservative estimate to get back in the courthouse, Knoxville now has, maybe it's because of all the work we've done over there. But they have somebody interested in East. Surprisingly. So.
In East?
In East.
Keeping it as a building or the interior?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know. And I don't care. So don't ask me. All I want to, I I just got to give them an idea on a most, on a conservative basis, when we can get out. And if it's November, December, that's fine.
Let's let's surprise them with an earlier exfil, but I would say November, December.
Got it.
Jeff? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
If, when we figure out what these signs are going to look like, what we need in the East Elementary, you you do have the capability of making those, correct?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, perfect. All right, anything else? Board, anything else? Good discussion. Thank you for taking time out of your mornings. Appreciate it. Like I said, we'll keep talking as we open. Uh, if issues come up, rate, shout out, raise a hand. Um, if there's things we didn't consider, the this is the, we got, the opening is going to be sloppier than the closing was. Cause there's, they're trying to do this in piecemeal fashion and whenever you do that, just like we talked about with social distancing, there's always going to be the, well, what about this? So raise a hand and let's have that discussion.
Karen? I do have a question um about PPE. Can we recommend that they wear a mask or have disposable masks for the public? My people are planning on wearing masks at least in the beginning. Can we ask the public to wear a mask when they're there?
No, I don't think so. I I don't think so. I think let's, let's research.
We can ask.
I think we can ask. I don't think we can force them. I guess I'll say it that way, Karen.
I don't know if we can supply that many.
Yeah.
And I think that's. That's going to be the biggest issue, Karen, is we can't supply them.
Right.
So unless we've got the uh, I you know, the the local seamst- seamstress group that wants to, or seamsters. That'd be the male version of a seamstress.
I'm making them for my office. I can't make them for the whole world.
You know, they supply a whole stack of, I I don't know how we do it.
And Chris, I'm making them for Chris.
And how to ensure that they're safe.
Yeah, well. Like you see at the hospital, the blue with the.
Yeah.
So we have between several of us.
I don't think it would hurt to ask if you want to ask and they're, they want to comply, it's fine.
We strongly recommend or just recommend, I don't know how over the verb is.
Can we also say, you know, to customers in the office at a time, we have a really small area.
I think you can do the the six-foot, I mean, especially when you're putting in your distancing, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, definitely, definitely.
I mean, that's what we're planning on doing, but I just want to make sure that it's, it's acceptable that we do that.
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Very good. Okay, there's nothing else?
Okay, so next Thursday, we'll be meeting again, nine AM.
Oh, one last thing before we adjourn, and this is related to this. Our furlough program, I want to make sure everybody understands this, because I've gotten emails, Keisha's gotten emails, we've got all kinds of comments. The purpose of that furlough program was to find people who did not have a lot of work to do. Or in some cases, no work due to our change in operations and try to save the taxpayer a little money and give the employee a benefit. The math was done on all of our staff members who who are on furlough and they're going to come out ahead financially. And they don't lose their county insurance. So nobody was financially harmed in this. Okay? Now that we're opening back up, I doubt we'd go any farther with that, but we've saved the taxpayer about fifty-five thousand dollars. And that's a conservative estimate. So we'll take that and we've gotten thank you notes from several of the folks who are on it. So Keisha and Lisa did a great job with this. And dispel any rumors you hear in your departments, because I'm frankly tired of hearing them, okay? This was not done to target anybody or harm anybody. But sometimes, if we take advantage of that federal program especially, that extra six hundred, it helps the employee out and helps the taxpayer. So that's what we did, okay? With that.
Quick question too, just on uh Daryl being new, um working in the courthouse and I've had a lot of positive, very positive comments and different things, but. Is there anything that he, I need to have him work on as a adjusted?
He's awesome.
Doing a great job.
Adjusted perfectly and that's, that's what I'm hearing, but if there's things that, I mean, not here, but please let me know if there's things that you think, hey, can you work on this or work on that? But I've had tons of positive comments about.
He's extremely helpful.
He's doing great.
Daryl's a great guy.
Just, yeah, reach out if there's something, but otherwise I'll pass on the, yeah, kind word, so.
Yep.
Good, good, appreciate that.
Killed a bumblebee for us, yes.
It will be a special little note.
He gets his bumblebee wings, is that what you're saying?
He'd be needing fly swatters for all the losses.
We can do that.
Yeah, I have a fly swatter, but nobody was going near it.
All right, while I have you all here, real quick, take two seconds. Work order system. Some of you are amazing at the work order system for my department. Some of you love the phone. I love to talk, okay, so I don't mind the issue that I've run into with the the maximum amount of phone calls that I'm getting from county departments. Is that without you putting a work order in, there is just a good a chance that I'm going to forget to jot it down because I'm in the middle of ten other things. So if you could all please remember to use the work order system. Um, I'm going to be gone starting this Thursday, tomorrow, and I will be back to the following Friday. Um, so definitely do work orders, because if you call the phone, the guys, I swear, are probably not going to pick it up, because it's probably going to be in a dumpster or somewhere. So work order system would be excellent, and I will forward on the guys' cell numbers at some point today via email. But please get back to the work orders. I would greatly appreciate it.
Chris, how long are you gone for?
Uh, Thursday to Thursday. I am taking a staycation at sixteen ninety-six Quebec Street, where I don't plan on leaving for a week, so.
Did your wife had enough of you being gone?
She has had enough of me being gone.
So Thursday to Thursday is based on the belief that at some point, on Sunday, she doesn't decide you need to go back to her.
Based on that, yes.
All right.
Well deserved, Chris.
Very good.
And continue to do an awesome job.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it, appreciate the discussion. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion, we adjourn.
Second. Amy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you.